Just like.
How are you? You think we have any more? Yeah, I bet you are. It's good though.
There are. I would ask me both.
We should tell her. Maybe I'll text her tonight, tell her that. That way. We just hear it from the horses. Think it's best way to do it anyway. Talk to my dog. From the years to have. It's the natural light. And the sea is not red. It's a raspberry.
It's eight oh seven P M.
Yeah, I pulled it up online today. I should print it out. We have a committee right now. We should meet me in. Right. I have like. Good or just good? I didn't agree today. I don't see nobody's. My big deal for me. I'm so bright. So they didn't have a Saturday because of the weather. So we had it during the day on Friday. Yeah. Still active back. Yeah. I think that I for some reason I feel like you're a cat on a Saturday. But I don't know that. And then about the wedding was supposed to be crappy. So that's probably why they didn't do it. Oh yeah, well, we miss a lot, so. Should have printed that out. Make sure it doesn't turn red. And remember, it's going to be a dark side. So. I'll just say.
Yes, just. Well, they don't know where. Working behind the scenes, telling me the danger, actually, that's what I heard.
We should. The repeat just. If I was called.
I'll make a motion to approve the moving agenda for tonight.
A second.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February eighteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Number twenty twenty five made some difficult planning for our.
My mic is not on. Sorry about that.
For the record, I'm Adam Zach Lakowski, the Planning Building Director. This particular item. If you recall, there's one piece of property that Mount Vernon Schools owns that happens to be south of State Road two thirty four, and that's this Performance Enhancement Center that they have where they basically more or less a sports training facility, as I understand it. And so simply put, it made sense to annex this piece into the town limits, just so the entire Mount Vernon School District campus down there is all under town limits. It's all Fortville Police that would respond, etc. So this particular item is under Indiana law, even if it's a voluntary basic annexation is this one, and there's no property tax revenue that we'd be getting. The law still requires that you adopt a resolution and the associated fiscal plan, which has been completed. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to address them. And then secondly, under old business three A is the actual ordinance that you you would be asked to be to approve if you you can do so after approving the fiscal plan. Thank you.
I was just looking for a motion.
No, I don't have any questions.
I can make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash three A, the fiscal plan for voluntary annexation in the town limits of the Mount Vernon Schools Performance Enhancement Center.
I'll second. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Should we go ahead and do the? The ordinance?
Sure.
This will be the consideration, the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one A, adopting the annexation of the Mount Vernon Schools Performance Enhancement Center property.
So this is just approving the annexation, right? Adopting the annexation. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading, reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one A, adopting the annexation of Mount Vernon Schools Performance Enhancement Center property.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do I need to sign this here, I think?
Yes.
I thought so.
Yeah, both the resolution and the ordinance, please.
Okay. Up next, we have consider alterations to the community center lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Hancock County. Keith, do you want to? Come up and explain?
Good evening, Heath Luther Parks Manager. The email that I'd sent to you all previously with the the red line and the regular contract kind of spelled out really what's going on. The Boys and Girls Club has decided to start work for another place really based on their long term plans of growth and things like that. And they just don't feel like the community center is going to be a a good fit form from a space perspective. And so what I would like to do is obviously they were wanting to be able to not just pull the plug on their attendees, you know, right now. So they would like to service through the end of the school year, and Joe and I sat down with them. We are completely okay with that and getting them set up so they're not they don't have a disruption in service while they find a fund another home. So the only really thing that changed in that contract was essentially the reduction of the current rents to kind of fit a little bit more appropriately the size. It's now being utilized within within the community center. And so that will run pretty much month to month, April, March, April. I believe their intent was just to pay for all that at once and then move out sometime middle of May, sometime in there. So it's really all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
Sad it didn't work for him, but that just means they're growing, I guess. I would go ahead and make a motion. Unless anybody has any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the alterations to the Community Center lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Hancock County to a month to month lease.
Second. I oppose. Next up, we'll have a discussion. I think Fritz wanted us on the agenda to discuss the potential of creating a park board.
I just wanted to just have like in the public, we've been talking about this for a while. And every time I I I ask McCordsville and Greenfield and Pendleton, there's no problems with the parks board. And it seems like we need help in the parks area. Just not, not, nothing wrong with Heath, what Heath is doing is just, I think having five extra people would would help enhance what's going on there, help manage the parks. All I hear is pros. I I'm trying to ask somebody what the comments. I haven't heard anything negative.
Money would be one of them, I'd say, especially right now. My opinion on that is, is that we don't have enough parks to consider that. We have two parks that I think that so far have been handled pretty well, and it's it's slowly coming along with the growth. It can never stay steady with the growth. We're we're all sitting here waiting on this Senate bill that's going to go through to see what's going to happen. So right now, I don't think is a good time to make a decision about it anyway. It could substantially, I think. Since our clerk's not here, but it it could cost us four hundred thousand a year out of our budget if it gets passed. And now they're asking us to to try to pitch in with animal control, so. The Senate bill for property tax reductions. And they won't make that. Probably they will. I won't hear for it until April, I would say. But I think we need to pay attention to that real close right now. Just I'm not going to sacrifice what we have going now for making a decision about a park board, which will which will affect our budget tremendously in order for it to act the way it needs to act. So we we have to, but we have to appropriate money for the parks board out of our budget. And they also have the ability to secure bonds, which will affect our total bond amount that we could have as a town. So there's there's some, there's hesitation there, I think, on that end, just from myself. I don't know about anybody else. I'm just talking about myself. The the financial part of it is a big concern for me.
Tony, you said that we'd have to appropriate money for a parks board?
Yes. Out of the budget.
For what?
You wouldn't really, you wouldn't necessarily appropriate. What you do is you take the parks budget that you have now and all the property and everything that the park owns, you turn that over to the park board. See, you lose.
That can get, that can get a tax levy too, though, right? Yeah. So see, we we stand to have that also, another tax levy, another piece of the pie being directed somewhere else other than for safety and what we're doing here.
Should we repeat questions? Because I know people are watching this online and you can't hear people.
Yeah, you probably should come up here and I I mean, I know we're sitting here. Yeah, so.
So it would be part of our budget that would be sent away, you know, would be reallocated more like. But if we're, I mean, I'm curious, because I I've heard about this as a group of volunteers who can get grants and things like that. But we have budget for parks, right? And the budget would go along to the parks board. But if we were using it for parks, what's kind of the difference? Like if we use it or if they use it?
His budget is very small right now. I would think that in order to have any kind of substantial YQ folks are looking for, I think. That's a pretty big piece of the pie that he doesn't get. So it would be in addition to what he's already appropriated for his his budget.
Are you talking about salary or or for the community center or?
What he takes to maintain the parks with his salary and maintenance.
I'm just trying, curious, how's that change anything if they're if he's still getting the same pay and they're all volunteers? And how's that?
Not talking about pay.
Is a park board volunteer? They can be compensated.
They're volunteering to the.
I understand that, but I'm saying it's being official.
Yeah, they normally have a salary.
Oh, I keep caring about it as this concept of volunteers who were just.
What would the pay be? Would be minimum.
Be set by an ordinance.
You have, you'd have money in salaries, meetings, and administrative overhead.
I'm asking is, what do we pay the people on the R D C and the zoning board? That's pretty minimum, isn't it?
Do any of us know the answer?
Yeah, it's it's May. You may set compensation by you, the fiscal body for the park board members. So it's not a requirement, just like.
Okay, so we don't have to pay if we want to.
So then we go into our head to for the number to not be zero.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Alice on the spot here and forgive me, Alex.
Can they vote to get paid for themselves? Like, can they vote to get paid?
It'd be the establishing, be the ordinance that establishes the park board would determine whether they were compensated and what that compensation would be.
Can you go over just quickly the kind of Indiana statute? I know we've talked about this and what it actually means to establish a parks board and how that does affect council and or budgets with the way that's kind of just got a quick ten thousand foot overview of like kind of how how that works. Again, I I'm, I work for the people and for you guys. So whatever is decided is decided. But I think there's some a little bit more kind of detail on that Alice can probably shed a little bit of light on.
Yeah, it so generally a parks board is an independent, you know, municipal body created by an ordinance that this council would would establish and adopt. Once the park boards created, as Tanya alluded to, they have a number of statutory powers, a lot of which are similar to what the town council has with respect to the parks. They can issue debt in the form of bonds. They can condemn property through eminent domain. They can lease, you know, like we're talking about. So everything that the count, pretty much everything the council does related to the parks right now. The Parks Board would have that power. With respect to the budget, they would have to still work with the town council on the proposed budget. You're still the fiscal body, but they have a lot of power in how that money is used. You mentioned they can you know, seek a tax levy to increase taxes to to pay for things going on in the park. But a lot of it's the control as well. And once you have a a parks board, it is no longer. All things park are, except for the finances, are in front of the parks board. So there's a determination about there to sell the community building. That's a parks board consideration, not a town council elected official consideration. So I mean, that's a distinction as well. It goes from the power being with elected officials to appointed officials for things in the parks. Some communities are comfortable with that. Some communities aren't. I know as Fritz mentioned, I I can, second, I know that the parks board has worked well in Pendleton. Pendleton is not Fortville. I know that there are other communities where parks boards were created and then abolished because of conflict between visions for the park. Conflicts between the council and the park board about the direction and and how the park should be run and operated and so forth. So you know, it Fortville is unique and what works for Fortville may not work for some other community and you know, but.
We've, we've had a zoning board now for almost six years. And they have total autonomy from us. They can get denied zoning and do all that. Only a court can overturn their decisions. And we haven't had any issues with those five people. Same thing with the R D C. We've even given them the riverfront to be able to to issue liquor licenses. And those five people have done very well. And they make decisions that we can't control either. All we do is decide who's on the zoning, who's on the R D C. And so far, I haven't seen any issues from them having the power.
I I'd say the the difference between V Z A and the council or the B Z and a parks board is V Z A can't condemn property, can't enter and leases, can't, I mean, they're an administrative body, right? That deals with land use and zoning and and those types of issues, just like the Plank Commission. R D C can, also appointed, can issue, you know, bonds and do redevelopment, but only with the participation of the town council. The parks board, the parks board has more autonomy with respect to the parks than, say, the R D C does within the redevelopment districts. So not exactly apples to apples.
Six years, we haven't had any issues. We've worked well with everybody. I don't, I just think this would be an enhancement.
It seems like, but in theory, you would create a parks board to work more for the people of what they want. But in reality, they're less accountable to the public than what the council is because they're not voted in. Yeah, but they can, right? So I mean, there would be less, like, they could do whatever they want, no matter what the public says in theory.
Right.
Because they're not really answer, they don't answer to the public necessarily.
Rotated off.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so they're rotated off and on.
But they're still appointed. Right, they're not elected.
But we appoint people to the R D C.
But they're not the same thing. That's what he just said. I mean, I just in theory, I'm saying that it could be a problem. Maybe not, but it could arise problem. That's all I'm saying that they aren't, you know, they aren't there now. So I'm just throwing things out there of things that could happen and maybe not happen in the appearance of what it is supposed to maybe be, but what it really is.
You have to have a public meeting, yeah.
Yeah, there.
It has to be ran just like our.
Alex, I have a follow up question for you. Alex, I have a question, I have a follow up question for you. You mentioned about the community center, you know, that they could sell the community center. Are there other buildings or assets in town that are considered part of parks other than the actual parks?
That would be a question for Heath or, or Joe. Um, but just to touch on something that came up, I mean, removal of, of members is possible, but only for cause. And they have appeal rights as well, so. Yes, they're appointed, yes, they roll and appointed by council, but, um. I would, in most situations, cause does not mean we disagree as a council member disagrees with what's going. He's, yeah, um, something serious and there's got to be written charge, specific written charges against the number. But as far as the building, another property, Joe or, or Heath, I, I just don't know, I mean.
No, it's just pretty much the, the property that's out there and the equipment. If I could, I, I mean, I did, if it's a curse that I was here when we had our parks board in the past. And I will say, I'm not going to say park boards are bad, uh, that one did not work out the whole time I was here when it first started. Um, the park board seemed like they fought amongst themselves more and they couldn't agree on what color to paint the dugout or what proof to put on. So whenever it would happen.
You add five more people, that's legitimate, you add more people to the room, there, there's more.
But, but I mean, we observed the parks department, the town council took that over, that put the parks back under the umbrella of the town. So since then, that with the parks department, we kind of split up, uh, some duties with the street department, we help each other out. We've supplied the parks department with, uh, some of our equipment, those kind of hand me downs to give them one, an opportunity to do more out there. Uh, we've equipped them all plow trucks and the snow blowers. Those guys out there, they help with the snow removal and we're the ones that clean all the sidewalks off on Main Street. I know we're going to be talking about that here in a little bit, but they're the ones that do that. If we get a parks board like the one we had, I'm not saying this was going to be, but it was like the one we had. They wanted total separation, they didn't want the street neutrality department in the parks. And they went out there digging, they wasn't doing anything without coming back before the board for approval. And then they couldn't make up their mind, so nothing was getting done and it was. It was more of a hindrance than it was a benefit. Oh geez, I don't know.
I, it was before.
Yeah, Bob Hayden can tell you, I think he might have been on it somehow.
Well, I, I had a question, this is a rich case with, uh, Fortville Action and I, and I'm asked this because I, I don't know the answer to this, but. I know right now, uh, this was brought up that, uh, last council meeting, we were seeking, um, some money to get approval for a five year plan. Um, because we were trying to get, um, trying to get something set up and approved with Indiana D N R. Um, we don't currently have one, do we know the, like, the last time we had an approved five year plan with?
That's what he's been working on, yeah.
Two thousand and one, uh, so, so I, I have, like, I, I didn't know if we had had one since then. But that's probably about the last time there was a park board. And my thought is that a park board makes sure that these kind of things are happening. And there's a lot on your guys' plates that are. There's a lot on your guys' plates that you're doing that are, you know, that, that are important, it's important work that you're tackling. And a park can seem lesser, and I know it's, I know you, it's not lesser. Um, but if it's twenty four, twenty five years since we've had a five year plan approved. And we had them in two thousand and one and before and prior when we had a park board. And we have situations where surrounding towns have successfully written grants and pulled money into the community that has paid for projects and improvements. That Fortville hasn't had, so I know with our current situation as it is, uh, as I've understand Alex has said, the town council acts as park board. But we don't have, I don't think you guys, maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you guys probably have the capacity. To write a bunch of grants and to go out there and, and, uh, and make sure that all of the, the, the flora and fauna are, are, uh, compatible with. But pollinators and all of this kind of stuff, nor do I think this is probably your area of expertise. And I don't think you're probably elected to this position because of that, but I think you're elected to the position because you're leaders and you can probably select those people. Who maybe are experts to make sure Fortville's parks are, you know, run properly. And that's kind of, uh, an area of leadership where you don't have to take on every single responsibility, but you can select those people in the community who are experts. To make sure that things are done smoothly and that's just a kind of a, and, you know, food for thought on it. If things go awry, I'm sure you could just disband the park board again, but those are my thoughts, I, um. I know that we have had a five year park plan in the past, um, and, you know, talking to different, you know, the library about the, uh, story walk. Um, McCordville's having a story walk installed and it's being paid for by the park board, they went out and got a grant for it, no taxpayer money is doing it. We are, Fortville Action is working on a story walk that we're going to have to pay for, uh, through donations and, and through fundraising. Um, because we don't have, uh, we don't have a parks board to, uh, to go for that same grant because we don't have an approved five year plan, so. Just, um, that's an impact that, that can come into play, so. Those are my thoughts, I appreciate you guys having the conversation, I know right now might not be the right time with the, with the tax, with the tax bill that's going on there, but. Hopefully, um, this conversation can continue and we can kind of make a pa, a path forward, so thank you guys.
Thank you. I, I have a question, what, um. Other communities our size with parks, parks boards, are, are there, how many of them are out there that we know of that are around? Cause I know, you know, McCordville is obviously not our size, but I know Pendleton owns more proper, like their park owns a golf course and some other things they need upkeep more than, you know. So I'm not sure, uh, part, you know, our size, I didn't know if there's a lot of other communities with forty five hundred people that have a parks board. Is that, do you know?
I, I don't know, I don't know either, I mean, we could look into that and see, um, just curious.
I think too that, um, this, this is a lot of conversation that we've had, we don't have, we have some things in the pipeline here that's not ready to present to you guys yet, but. Um, we have a way to manage some of the things that we want to do out there at Landmark Park and make it better. Um, I don't think there'll be any problem obtaining that. Um, yes, it takes us a little bit longer because we do have other things to do, but it doesn't mean we don't ignore it and we're not trying to work on it. It's just not at the speed that you guys probably prefer it to be, but it's not a forgotten thing. You know, our park, and I still don't think Memorial Park has everything that it needs, I mean, I would, I would personally much rather work on it. To get to it where it needs to be before we go to Landmark Park, but I understand the reason for doing and asking what you're asking. Um, but I think that, uh, I think we can do a few things here to make, make some things happen that you guys want. And do it with our own money without asking for somebody else's.
People's money is nice, though, sometimes.
Well, yeah, if they want to give it, we'll take it, we're not, we're not opposed to that, so. Just come up here and talk, if you guys want to say something, come up and say it. People at home can't hear it, so.
So there, there's, there is a lot of money out there, we just got to ask for it, um, and it's, it's hard, like, it's a process, you have to qualify for it. And, and there's different things you, you can ask for, you have to know. There are people out there who are really plugged into this kind of thing that know how to ask for a piece of inclusive playground equipment or, or, or in place stuff. There are people who know how, uh, you know, that they can go and, and get indigenous, you know, uh, tree grants and different things like that. The people that are really connected in, into this world that, that can go out and just get this stuff. Um, this money that's out there that can be pulled into, into Fortville, so. I know that we can do things in our budget and I know that there are things, and, and, and I think that this is not a reflection on, on you guys. You guys have not been the town council since two thousand and one. I'm not saying that, that this is just a, a current town council has, you know, done bad or whatever. Uh, you know, it's, it's been a twenty year thing where, you know, we haven't had the five year plan and all this kind of stuff, I'm saying. This, this town council has really engaged well with the parks department, I do think that there are opportunities to like. To bring in experts and to make sure that there are people who are putting their entire. You know, their entire focus on fundraising, grant writing, setting a, setting a direction. Um, bringing that cash in from the county, bringing that cash in from different organizations, Eli Lilly grants. Um, there are so many different avenues to go out and find thirty thousand, fifty thousand, forty thousand. And we taught, we started this conversation talking about how small Heath's budget is. Um, and I've seen his budget and, um, you know, knowing where his budget is, you know, forty thousand dollars goes a long way. Twenty thousand dollars, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. So it is important to make sure that we're stretching that as long as we can, that we're making the most out of it. Um, and that's where I think a parks board can really make an impact, I, I, I do think that. Overall, it would be something that, and I don't think that the parks board and Landmark Park are, you know, you need one to have the other or anything like that. I think that in the future, it's probably something that as Fortville continues to grow, it might be something that, that. You guys want to have in place, but, um. I, I think, I, I think of it as an, as an opportunity to really draw in some, some resources for Heath. Um, give him, give him the opportunity to, you know, do more with what he has and keep his budget. You know, in operations and, and not capital improvements and really fund the capital improvements that he wants to see. With outside money that's sitting there and maybe being used up by surrounding communities instead of, uh, being sent to Fortville, so.
Rich, I have a follow up question for you, um, that's maybe, maybe like a devil's advocate question, that's maybe along the lines of what Tanya was saying. Because the, the other people's money, the grant money, seems like one of the major appeals of a parks board.
Yeah.
Cause we're here discussing like pros and cons, right? So one of the big appealing features of it would be, oh, that, that a parks board could go get grant money. But you, you guys already, you know, you're already F A I, right, you already have F A I and just. Um, maybe just for clarification.
Sure.
Would it be equally possible for you all to go get grants as F A I if we would sort of be more coordinated? Or do you have some better ability to get grants or some sort of better advantage or more ability to do it as a parks board?
Sometimes, but we are also limited in our, in our knowledge and scope and abilities as well. Um, and not all the time, we, uh, some, a, a lot of grants are required to be written by governing bodies. Um, there are some grants as a nonprofit that we can write and there are some that we cannot. Um, so, so there are some limitations that, when it comes to that. Um, and there are some that require an, an approved, I, uh, Indiana D N R five year plan and there are a bunch that don't. So, you know, you're, yeah, eh, to, to answer your question, it, it gives you more at bats at, in different categories.
More access.
Yes. And then also more people working on it, right? So like, we wouldn't go, like, we wouldn't stop, you would just have, we could continue to coordinate, um, but you'd have, you know, whoever you guys would find as the most. Qualified and in, engaged and knowledgeable people that Fortville has to offer, also working hard and diligently on bringing that, that capital into town.
People who would want to be involved in a parks board who aren't necessarily part of F A I, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah, I don't, I don't know necessarily that F A I, I mean, I don't know, I haven't asked F A I, I don't know that we would have people on it that would be like, qual, I mean, I don't know.
Let me ask Alex a question, in order to be appointed to the park board, do you have to be St. Harbors or, you know, lawn care type? Playground equipment, knowledge, or you just? They don't necessarily have to be, they don't have to have that knowledge anymore than what the town council's got at this point.
Correct, you, you don't have to be, but the statute does contemplate that the council should make an effort to appoint people who do possess qualities. And, and knowledge and experience that would, you know, relate to running and furthering the parks mission.
That for the planning commission too, they, they suggest that you have an architect on there and, but you just get what you, what's available, but.
Well, no, so we, we're dead in the water at this point, I mean, we do have the ability to go out and get some grants. Uh, hire some consultants if we need to, a grant writer to help write some grants for some different things. But once that five year plan's done, I think that opens it up even more. So I don't know that.
Problem right now, I think what we've had is that we don't have a plan, so you can't go and, and get a grant for an idea, so hopefully we're working on.
And the other thing that's coming up and like, I appreciate Rich's comments as far as, uh, getting somebody on there that could go after grants and try to find the funding that way. And that would be the deal, if the council could say, well, don't you guys, this is what we want you to concentrate on. We don't want you going and bonding with some, getting us in trouble, you don't have ability to say that. The park board's duties are written according to the statute, so they have that ability and you can't modify it.
I mean, in theory, could you hire an individual person that that's all they did was go after grants for the park and?
You could.
I mean, in theory.
But then that would cost us.
There are people out there that do just grant writing. If somebody else volunteers. I don't think so, yeah.
We've had grant letters before and they'll cover their costs with the grant thing, yeah.
Earned to volunteer.
No, the key, he just said that none of them, it will be qualified in the F A I.
I wouldn't be comfortable just having a volunteer write a grant. I think it's a job, it's, it's not a easy process, it's a respectable thing.
Takes a lot of time and knowledge to get it done, so. Well, um. I think, uh, moving forward, let's take a look at what we've got, um. Coming through the pipeline here, see if we can clear up a couple of things, have some drawings and some perspective for you guys and then, uh. Wait to see what happens on this bill and that's really going to determine everything. Cause if they pass it, then we're going to have to really snug it up. And it's in our police department and that's not going to take a hit on it, and I can tell you that. So we just need to be careful what we do right now.
It's a good point to hold steady until the bill is resolved, right?
Yeah, not saying that we're not interested, you know, we're, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not sure that it's even the best thing for us to have, but we're willing to look at it.
I love growing con conversation.
I mean, it's, it's the only way you're going to find out what, what's going to work. I still feel like we're too small, you know, Heath does a great job of doing what he does and if we had another.
That was kind of my question.
Park pop up, you know, I mean, he's the one that's got all the qualifications, you know, so, I mean, I, I put my faith in what he does.
It won't be long before we're that big, though.
And, and you know, we, we, we probably are more than five thousand people because we haven't had the census yet, but when we've, you know, we're, we're, we have more people here.
I think that was the last year, two thousand twenty, it's like a thousand, oh, people. In two thousand and twenty three, I think, so.
Twelve thousand.
So, I was going to wait until the end, but it seems kind of appropriate now, that way, listen to me here. Oh, um. I, I do agree, Joe and I have talked about this for a while, I, I do think, and I've said from day one, that we will probably go to a point where. We gain more assets, we gain more park space and having a parks board is probably going to make sense. Um, I think as everybody has stated and everybody's on the same page, the first step of that is getting this done. And that is one of the things, and I, I put this in your guys' box, um, we can have show go. It's nothing, it's just what I got from the consulting company, just kind of the timeline and some of the things that we're going to go over, um. Right through in your guys' mailbox, I want to say last Monday or the Friday before that, um. When this is done, I think we'll have a much better perspective on where we're at, uh, with them pulling all the different numbers and the demographics and just the different. Um, things that can happen in and around the parks, one of the things that's in here, if you, if you look through it and kind of look at the timeline is, is funding opportunities. One of the conversations we're going to have with these guys is the different ways that parks can use to fund, you know, whether it's grants, whether it's, um. You know, a, a food tax within the, you know, the business district for, you know, an extra, you know, half percent on, on food that goes directly into parks. Whether it's stating, instituting something like park impact fees, which we do not currently have. Um, so there's, the, the goal will be for them to give us, um, kind of a list of things of, hey, here's, here's how you can kind of do it. Um, one of the things that we can also do, and I can have a conversation with them, is going back to the grant writing, is, is picking their brains on. What have you guys seen from a grant writing standpoint, do you guys have anybody that you would recommend from a grant writing perspective? What's the general, I have no idea what the general cost would be on somebody coming in and finding grants and writing grants, I, you know, is that a? Five thousand dollar per grant, is that a twenty five thousand dollar, you know, per grant, is that a percentage of your? five thousand dollar per grant? Is that a twenty-five thousand dollar, you know, per grant? I, is that a percentage of your, I don't know what that number looks like. So I'd hate to say that it's not, couldn't be afforded, but I also don't want to say that, you know, it could be super cheap either. I, I, I don't know what that looks like. And I, I think having a conversation, which I will have, starting this Wednesday, we are doing bi-weekly meetings with, um, this consulting group, just for everybody to kind of continue on the same page. And the goal is to, just so everybody's aware, the rough draft for DNR, if that's something you guys would like to, we don't have to have this approved by the DNR. Obviously, we want to have this plan done. We want it approved by the council. If it's something we'd like to get this into the state for the DNR, the rough draft is due, I think, mid-November, um, with the final draft due the following, I think, April. Um, and so the goal is to have this done and in place. If it's something we do want to present to the DNR and have it sent in, um, but by no means is that required. It does open up things like land and water conservation fund grants and some other state and federally managed grants, which obviously we've talked about this, come with some, um, come with some strings sometimes, um, but there may be some other opportunities out there. Again, th- these gentlemen, this is what they do, um, uh, from a consulting perspective and going into towns and municipalities and, and help them, you know, from, uh, I believe Noblesville's plan was somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand versus, you know, our plan, which was thirteen thousand. So they, they've done a real good job so far. I've been very impressed with this, uh, company and their communication. And so I'm looking forward to really getting into the weeds with these guys as far as getting this stuff done. Um, obviously we had kind of that rough draft over the last, you know, six months or so that was finished. You know, I went to Joe and I came to you guys, I, as much as I'd like to say it was good, I don't, you know, I, I want, we need an outside perspective and we need the community's involvement as far as what the plan for the parks looks like moving forward. And if it's something they come back and say, hey, listen, like this stuff all looks really great, but maybe you guys should look at instituting a park board by then. Maybe, you know, we'll know what the SB one has done, we'll know some different things. But I just wanted to keep you guys, kind of give you guys this overhead of what the timeline looks like. If you have any questions and, you know, a month from now, you can ask me, hey, you know, where are we at with, it was said we were going to be done with this portion of it and I'll, I'll let you know where we stand with it. But this kind of gave everybody a, uh, kind of snapshot of what we're expecting over the course of the next four or five months.
That'll help, yeah.
And that's all I had for this evening, so.
Thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So next up, we have the discussion on sidewalk maintenance. Joe?
Yeah, I can, I can touch on this. It was about a month ago or so, the department heads and myself met with our insurance company, uh, with the risk control manager and our, um, I guess you're calling the broker, I think is his, um, actually position. But we went through a lot of different things, uh, from the town's perspective and, uh, where there might be some risk and things that we need to address. Of course, you don't always want to throw those weak points out into the public and show where your, you know, your vulnerable areas are at, but, uh, we did discuss snow removal on sidewalks. That came up. We did discuss, uh, social media. And we also discussed the additional insured that seemed like is something that keeps coming up quite often, so. Kind of run back to the sidewalks. We've got a sidewalk ordinance in place that, uh, well, it's actually, it's not called a sidewalk ordinance, it's called a what is it, maintenance, well, there were.
The parkway.
Parkway, parkway, that's it. So, um, and they'll say that that ordinance will work and push comes to show, but they preferred to have more detailed language in it that specified who is responsible for the sidewalks. Um, rather than just saying that, you know, the homeowners are responsible. So they put together some things that they thought would be good to include into that. Um, I showed it with Alex. Alex went ahead and put together a draft for you folks to look at. Of course, we're not asking anybody to do anything this evening, um, but just, uh, get in your hands, let you start taking a look at it, see what your thoughts are. Um, and also if, if I could just, uh, and again, I don't, hope I don't overstep here. The social media policy, they had some concerns with, uh, the town has got a social media policy for the staff. So we're all kind of aware of what you shouldn't say, what you shouldn't say online and how it could come back to affect the town. It could be a risk for liability purposes and stuff like that. However, we don't have one that covers elected officials, so that doesn't apply to them. But they wanted to emphasize how even somebody on their personal Facebook or Instagram or whatever, making comments could put the town at risk and even the individual to an extent, uh, personally. So I just wanted to put that out there and we can always, uh, hook you up with our risk manager if you want to have some conversations with him as well and he can kind of help walk you through some of that. The additional insured status, we, um, we always come up with these, uh, addition, well, the special events that we put on. When is, um, an additional certification, insurance certification required and when is it not? So we pretty much, uh, let's see, additional insurance status, contracts, for contracts for services, vendors and independent contractors. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, we had something a little bit more that we could go back and identify and know where to apply that versus if family's going to have a baby shower at the community center, do we have them get a, you know, certificate of insurance? No, we wouldn't. So it's more of like a, a vendor or independent contractor, somebody's providing services to the community.
Do, do we have, um, the, like, discuss the future sidewalk maintenance? I mean, do, do we have a list of the next five years, what sidewalks we're going to replace and fix and?
List, well, it's probably outdated at this point, uh, because leaves heaving up. In fact, I showed them my list and they pleased because the list of sidewalks that we're showing are identifying that's in bad shape, that's been replaced. Uh, we can go through and show that we're making progress every year. And I will say that's a couple of years outdated.
Can we see the list?
Yeah, I'll get it for you. But, um, like I said, there's, uh, the Bean Crossing project for Timber Ridge is getting ready to happen. All the sidewalks up there that's heaved up or in bad shape, broken or whatever, they're all going to be replaced with that whole subdivision project. Along with, um, ADA ramps and all the stuff brought up to ADA compliance. So we are doing multiple sidewalks each year trying to keep up with that.
Yeah, because I noticed on Main Street from the new apartments, we could get up to eighty to a hundred and sixty new residents and some of the sidewalks are not that good walking just down Main Street to get to the, the main core or.
Exactly. That road didn't go all the way through a year ago. So those sidewalks would probably move lower on the priority list. And if that road goes through and there's going to be more people up there and walking, that might move it up more on the priority list or something that needs to be
Okay.
addressed.
And I had something just for clarification on that. So ju- just on the the draft ordinance, I mean, this is to clarify subsection A. That language is exactly what the risk manager proposed. Um, and I think this is maybe in Joe's supplement that he had. So I, I did not change any of that. It seemed legally reasonable to me and I trust the insurance risk managers of what they see in the claims and what they'd like to have.
I had a question about it. So, I mean, what does in good repair mean? Like, how is that my responsibility? Like, what if there's a, if there's heaving, it's my responsibility to fix the sidewalk?
I don't know. Typically, the way the town knows that is snow. Because we walk all the sidewalks, we don't know what's going on.
So it's my responsibility to let you know.
Listen, we're going to, we're going to get it replaced.
And just, you know, by the language, it looks like that I'm responsible to make it in good repair. The other thing is if somebody trips and falls and there, and there's an upheaval, it's not my responsibility to make sure that it's fixed.
To repair, once the, once the homeowner has reported it, because if they reported it and two months later, it hasn't been fixed yet and somebody falls down. Whose responsibility is it?
A lot of it depends on severity. If it's, if it's something that's extremely dangerous, uh, yeah, we're going to block it off. We're going to block it until it's repaired. If it's, uh, just ugly because it's chipped up or got a little mud on it, it's probably not going to be as critical. Um, and I'll let Alex, if he doesn't mind, kind of, I don't know if there needs to be some clarification on that. I know a lot of communities, they leave the sidewalks up to the property owners. We did that years ago and it, uh, didn't work out well because we had people that could afford the new sidewalks and we had people that couldn't. So the town agreed. So we wanted to replace the sidewalks that are broken and and heaved up and keep going to repair.
And, and just to add on to that, I, if that's the way that the council wants to go, the system of look at landowners, the property owner's responsibility is not to go out there and pour new concrete and replace sidewalk, but to notify the town, notify and say, hey, I've got an issue, come out and look at this. If, if that's the way that you go, I think that's the responsibility and we can add some clarification in there. It's a good question. Um, as this evolves, we really just wanted this to be a conversation starter, kind of like the parks board item for you all to, to consider. And these are great questions and issues. How do, do you want to change the way that sidewalks are managed in the town from the way that they are now? If so, how? This is just a, a starting point. And like Joe said, the risk manager put that, the, the rest of the ordinance, I mean, I, um, and actually I see I didn't change parkway to sidewalk. I, I just used the similar penalties that we have for the parkway maintenance. And so we'll clean that up as well. If you decide to move forward and show that it's, it's sidewalk maintenance, not parkway maintenance, but those proposed penalties or anything were just a, um, a mirror of what we had done for the parkway maintenance. And then C is, um, subsection C there is the sidewalks, Main Street, I mean Church Street and North Side of Broadway. Those are the designated pedestrian route. That's kind of continuing the conversation we had back in January or February about snow removal. Um, so again, just a conversation starter, the important, the reason why the conversation started was that subsection A about the liability that came from the risk manager.
I just don't see how we can enforce this if, if, if a lady's on, or somebody's on social security. They're limited there and then they got doctor's excuse saying they can't shovel snow. How are we going to find them if they're on a lim, if they're on on a budget anyway, social security? I, I just don't see how we can enforce that.
I don't know that it's any different than the weed and, you know, weed ordinance and unsightly premises ordinance. I mean, the consideration and that there's no consideration in those ordinances for for, you know, income and ability to take care of your lawn and, and maintain your property. So like with any ordinance, there's the ability to appeal and if someone was cited and they want to come in and make an expl, you know, provide an explanation as to why they weren't able to comply, that they, they have that right. But I, I view it that way, that this is, this is in the same vein as unsightly premises and weed ordinance.
I think for the most part, people are considerate when it comes to that. This, this would be to have in place for those that want to, you know, see something that really isn't there. Like, if you have a neighbor that can't shovel their sidewalk and it's not causing a problem with you, you probably would either do it or not do it. It wasn't, it doesn't really affect anybody, but then it would come down to code enforcement like Jerry does now. Just for the weed thing, same thing. He goes out and looks at it. If, if there's something going on with that person and they're not around or whatever, then he makes the, you know, consideration for that. Maybe tries to help it out or get ahold of somebody that can help him out. So.
If I could add, and I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but we, uh, we actually, that is part of the ordinance now with the maintenance within the parkway that people are supposed to be cleaning the sidewalks and doing that. We're very lenient as far as we're not going after them and.
I think this would be an extreme, something.
Is it so bad the way we have it now? Just, I, I, I like part B. I like part B where we say, or no, not B. No, I, I don't, I don't like B. I like C. I like C personally where we, where we indicate like, hey, hey, look, the town will take care of the whole downtown area. I think it's implied, you know, that therefore everybody else should take care of all of their other areas that are not the, the central downtown area. It's, that sounds kind of similar to how it's been. People are just kind of expected to take care of their own stuff, but nobody's going to go enforce it.
But it's the language from this, the, our risk assessment manager has a copy of our parkway maintenance ordinance. And he said it is, you know, it, it should cover us. But when push comes to shove and there's any claims, he thinks this language will help protect the town better than the way ours is currently written.
That's A, right, Joe? The language in. No, no, no. A, A, A is the language that I believe Joe was talking about. From what I saw, I wasn't. But I, I saw his recommendation and that was the subsection A there that I, I think Ryan brings up a great point. Let's clarify what that means to keep it repairs, that notifying the town or whatnot, so that it's clear what the property owner's responsibilities are under the ordinance. But that is, that's the risk management.
I feel like we need to be able to hold the homeowner responsible as well. If they're driving over the sidewalk or something and they bust it up, they bring in a concrete truck and drive over the walk and they're gone. We need to be able to have the ability to go after them to to get those repairs done. And that, that's happened.
I would maybe separate the two. These sound like two different topics, you know, reporting, reporting that your sidewalk is crumpled up or in disrepair versus clearing the snow from it. Those sound like kind of two different paragraphs.
You can do that within the ordinance.
So A is, A is the, the repair, right?
And A mentions both snow and crumpled up. So I'm just saying.
Repair for you. Right.
I would make those two different paragraphs, snow and crumpled up, because those are two fundamentally different kind of issues. Snow is an incidental seasonal thing and crumpled up is over time disrepair. And they would be handled two different ways because crumpled up is the homeowner needs to tell the town. And snow is, you need to, you need to fix it. So I would, on, on that basis, I would just separate those two into two little paragraphs.
I don't have an issue with that.
So I, my, I mean, my other thought overall is we, we already had a parkway maintenance clause and it didn't talk about snow, I think, because that's how this came up a couple of months ago. But like I said, I like C. I like indicating what the town will take care of. I, I personally would add something just to say, and everybody else needs to take care of their stuff. But I think that was implied already. And I agree with what Tanya just said, you know, people who can't take care of their own sidewalks, I think it's kind of just implicitly up to your neighbors to help you. And I don't, I don't personally like the idea of finding people and I don't, you know, because of what Fritz said. If there's, you've, you've got somebody old and ill and on social security, they can't pay.
They won't do that.
And, and then that kind of goes back to if we're not going to really find somebody, then, then we're only just having a punishment that we would selectively employ. And I don't like selectively employing things. I don't like targeting people.
I think if somebody was to plow their parking lot and pile it up on the sidewalk, that would be a scenario where we would go after them and find them. They need to clean that up and get the sidewalk freed up.
Nuisance people, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, it's good to have it in here so we have that ability.
And the, the only other, uh, implication that's in here, the way that it's written right now, just so you're aware of it, is because it talks about, um, asphalt as well. So to me, that would mean if if somebody, I'm thinking of the, um, property owner at the northwest corner of two hundred West and Fort Co Pike, where we've got the trail. You know, as it stands right now in that language, she would be responsible to uh, plow the trail there, which I don't know if that's the intent or not. So. I don't.
We're not going to plow the trail, so it goes somewhere, I think. It doesn't go anywhere right now. When it does, we'll worry about that when it gets there.
They're just
right now.
If you make the policy, just food for thought on implications.
That's a good point. Yeah, like maybe we'll add it when it's ready. Move along farther until then. Find everyone.
I think there on C, we need to put a, I think it's, we, we lost part of it. It says, Main Street between Church Street and the north side of Broadway. It it needs to be to Broadway and then include the north side of Broadway as the, the primary pedestrian. it needs to be to Broadway and then include the north side of Broadway as the, the, the primary pedestrian route. Am I reading that wrong or is that?
Yeah, I think you're reading that right.
Yeah, we missed, it was on there and then it wasn't. Now it's not. So we gotta fix that. Okay.
And church and Broadway and then the north side of Broadway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So I guess next we have, uh, the apartment, Joe.
I'm up, man.
You're up.
Um, I only have a couple of quick items for you this evening. We felt for, uh, that they're sampling at the water treatment plant to see how it, the, was, um, all hooked up and ready to go this whole last week where was using this filtering to check the iron content, uh, within the water. The, um, before it was like point two after we would, you know, we were time to flush filters again and we had to flush every two days. If we didn't flush more than that, the iron levels got so high that, uh, you know, they just, they got out of control. So they were forced flushing every two days. Now those, they flushed last Monday and then didn't flush it until Friday. And I believe most of the week it was running at point oh one, point oh two. So it shows us doing a really good job. So we're excited about it and, uh, hoping that this is going to be the fix. I know there's some, uh, additional tasks that Dave's wanting to run, um, get samples at certain times because a lot of times right after the backwash would quote, was when he would get the slug. Um, so he's got to try to catch it at that point. Uh, to see what the clarity looks like there. But so far it's looking like it's doing the job and it's very encouraging. Uh, the only other thing that I've gotten this evening is, uh, I regret that, um, one of our street authority workers, Tim Gordon, has decided to leave us to go for more funding in one way. Um, so this Friday will be his last day here. Uh, he's, he was self-employed before and I think he's going back to work for his brothers and self-employed stuff. We've lost two of the citizens. And it's mainly because I think they pay close to the same, they pay a little bit more, but they also pay overtime and they work a lot of overtime. And those young guys that are hungry, they work as many hours as they can and eat it up. Or we don't pay, we give comp time versus paying them out. That's all I have for this evening. What's your opinion for me?
No, nothing for me unless you have any questions then.
I've got one, um, uh, the trees on Broadway that are dead in the lot and the, the limbs are breaking off. Um, you know which ones I'm talking about, um, on the north side, uh, right next to Speedway. Uh, there's two trees that are, some major limbs are all dead.
Okay.
A, a resident here in town, I mean, Jerry kind of started writing them up for, um, we're having a dead tree and then they drive by there every day and they're, they keep going, why, why hasn't he addressed those dead trees on Broadway? When they were, uh, you know, enforcing it on him. Just, uh, he just needs to, somebody needs to do something about those trees.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, usually we wait until the leaves are back on the trees to make sure it's.
This one, it's dead.
Pretty dead. So.
The bark's fallen.
Where was this at, Fritz?
It's right next to Speedway, that empty lot. There's two major, some major limbs and barks.
Yeah, we can, we can put it on the, on the list.
All right. Thank you.
See, and what is Gil doing? Is he still wanting to sell the property or what's going on there?
I don't know. I hadn't heard that. I haven't, uh, talked to him in quite a while, so I honestly don't know. But, uh, he still owns it as of today, I believe. So last I heard was, um, you know, he got approval to do the, I think he got approval to do the new subway restaurant there and, uh, mixed use building and, um, I don't know.
What's going on with the Indian? The Indian restaurant?
Oh, on Main Street?
Yeah.
Um, last I heard, they're, they're still ready to open. They got their, you know, they're still moving forward. I don't know why it's so slow. Um, but they did get their permits through the town and.
I remember all that stuff.
He did reach out to me. He was asking about a sign permit recently, so.
Maybe they're getting closer.
Yeah, hopefully.
That's worth, it's like almost like real life, you know?
Okay.
Everybody keeps asking.
It'll be nice to have, you know, another restaurant down there. So.
Hank, do you have anything else to add? Okay.
I do. Um, just an update on our hiring process. We are still accepting applications. We've done some testing, but so far I don't believe anyone has passed. So if anybody knows any good candidates, please let me know. Send them my way. I would appreciate it. Um, I know a lot of you have read the article about animal control in the paper this past week and how the chief should go play dog chip, dog catchers. Um, I ran all the reports from last year. There were thirty four of them. Animal control showed up to Fortville twice, maybe three times. Um, at our request, after we've already quarantined the dog in our garage in our cage. So, um, we're having a meeting tomorrow about that. Myself and, and Janine and Tanya to discuss that because I don't think their numbers are quite accurate. So, um, I think that's about it unless you have questions for me.
No questions. Nobody's here from the clerk's office. Alex, you have anything?
I don't have anything further unless you have questions for me.
Public comment, anybody?
Rich, FAI again, um, just really quickly, I just wanted to make sure that we were planning on, I know it doesn't feel like it right now. We had a couple of nice days. And so we're kind of starting to think about the planters on Main Street. Um, wanted to make sure we weren't stepping on anyone's toes if the town wanted us to, uh, plant in the planters again this year. If that was okay?
Sure.
Good, good. All right, cool. So we're going to probably try to like coincide that with the, um, the event that's going on on Main Street on May first, uh, and we'll do, we'll see, we'll see if we can get that done. We did go out there and kind of clear those out and that kind of stuff, but we'll be out there doing some, some landscaping and stuff like that. I just wanted to kind of like throw it out there. So we weren't just out there working on stuff without, out there with shovels without letting you guys know. So.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Bob? Yes.
Dave Jason, resident. Um, I think about two years ago, there was twenty five thousand dollars, uh, allotted for a survey of landmark park by a professional architectural firm, landscape architects. I think twenty was from R or DC and five was from Fortville Action. And I was wondering if that survey or that, uh, drawings came out and it was just, disregarded or, uh, not, not usable or what? Anybody got any idea what happened with that?
Is that the plan? The plan that they?
That's the one that was far as I understood with FAI.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The redevelopment commission. I think everybody liked them, um, and they'll be used to help with the new five year plan or be things incorporated. But I think the, the cost that was associated with that originally was about three million dollars. And I think the council had looked at some of that and there's been some talk between FAI and the council members that we can dial that back a little bit. And if we can, uh, make some changes, we can possibly get it all done and get it funded sooner rather than later.
You come out and do a survey.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know that when it's not.
This plan, front two is landmark specific. Town Parks Department overall. Put it into the master plan. So.
Pressed window. Association or whatever right now. Um, and you might want me to do a special event request for this, but we are planning a, an event on May first called Main Street in Bloom. So we paired with nine of the restaurants in Fortville. Only one didn't want to participate or tell us. Um, and they'll be, we'll be hosting bites and all of our different businesses for people to come in. It's a ticketed event. Streets are closed. We're up leaving on that, but just kind of a casual event for people to roam Main Street shop. Try our different restaurants and hang out in Fortville. So.
You're not looking for those.
I have a thousand for people to come out and.
The only time we close the streets will be Summer Fest and Winter Fest. We are working on Pink Elephant Days for September. And maybe on that Saturday, but we're still trying to iron out those details. So doing our best to keep the streets open.
Borderline, I guess. Thing, I think our special events request says if we're going to have fifty people or more. Well, that could happen with just one restaurant having a band one night. So if it's just, you know, the folks coming out and mingling and going around from restaurant to restaurant, shop to shop, I don't know that a special events request would be warranted for that. I think it's.
Thursday, like it's coming out, we're promoting it, people to come, this is later. Is that something maybe should you reach out to the chief, like know that we're doing something?
Yes, everybody, uh, even Andy for him to try to, um, help market it for you on our town page or whatever. So yeah, letting us know does help. So then we can pass it on to, yeah.
Or we're just going to let you know.
Yeah, that's great.
You were going to come to our meetings at least once a month, so I think you should give an update.
How, how much is the ticket for the?
Three dollars a person. And we're working with the rights gym on ninety six street or wherever they're down the road to do like a drop in. So hopefully people can drop their kids off there, then come to Main Street, walk around.
That's cool.
And so.
That sounds great.
Trying to get business on me.
Yep.
Any, yeah, I think, you know, if you know there's going to be an influx of people, because then I can adjust scheduling if we need to. Like if you're expecting a couple of hundred people or something, then I'm like, eh, maybe we should put an extra guy out tonight or something. So.
Yes. Okay.
Nothing, nothing formal. Just shoot me a quick text, email, whatever, and, and we're good. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council comments? Just living. Oh, I don't have anything. Ryan?
No.
I have nothing either.
I'm blue.
Okay. Need a motion to approve and sign vouchers?
Sign vouchers.
Second. And I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight forty five, seven, seven forty five. Sorry. Thanks for coming. He changed the clock.